So, um. I'm not sure if you saw this. I barely can hear him. Something happened to me on the night.
Well, we had a resolution. We're going to move forward, but I think. I just want to make sure that we're all. Awesome. If I see. They have a. They share. I'm sorry. I'm. 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 But what? They never. That's why. What exactly? What you want to. I'm. 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 This is. I'm worried. I don't think. I mean. I'm. 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 You know. I didn't know what I had to. I was trying to. It was trying to. I was trying to. I was. I was. I'm. See now. Yeah. I'm. Which was a hard time.
And the Monarch. Don't honor it. It's not. It's not. It's not.
Yeah, it'd be interesting. But it's a rest. We have a resolution for. Just remember. Remember like. All the way down. It's down to state. Kind of. You know, there's together. I don't think. I don't think. We're. We also. We're. 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 Yeah. Yeah.
And now. It's. The.
They're doing. Maybe. I guess. But. It's. It's. That's. You know. How it's been. It's. It's. Which is.
I don't. It's still more of a problem. Exactly. How's your. Everybody does. You know. I'm. 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 That's. They're not. It's. It's. Like. Well, that's. I'm. 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 Okay. Yes. I'm. 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 I'm.
Yeah. Yeah. And so, you know. I'm really. They're gonna take. The. Exactly. So. Right. Why? Okay. I'm. First of all. Well, there's a. A subtle. But yes. Or probably. It's. It's. Yes. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Yes. 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 No. Thank you. Your name is. George. Of. I'm. I'm. Okay. It's. No. Please. Oh, is your phone. So. You're working. It's. You're. Fine. So. That's. Right. And. How about. For. You. Um. It's. Well. Yes. 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 Because. Um. I have. Only. There. It's. It's. Because I'm a girl. Who. I'm. I'm. Someone. To. You. Is. You. You. I'm. 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 So. You. I don't. Do. I do. I do. I'm. I'm. Comments. That's my. Refuse. Sure. Yeah. Thank you. Carol. What? Sure. Sure. I. 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 Very good. Yeah. Our. Person. Was. Which. Was. It was. It was. First. Not. Yeah. What? He. He. This. Morning. And then. And. And. You know. Yeah. 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 It's. Really. That's. Right. That's. Really. He's. This. Morning. And then. And. And. You know. Yeah. 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 Really. Very. Good. But. We. We. Yeah. We're. Down. Or. Have. You're. Right. And that's. Thinking. I'm. 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 Yeah. I'm. 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 Somehow. I have. I have. I have. I have. I have. I have. You know. I'm. 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 You're. 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 Hard to get. One. To. Get. Me. Most. Oh. I'm. 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 Yes. So. We. 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 When. We. 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 Again. You're. Like. Slime. We. 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 Yeah. Okay. No. It would be. I'm. Mostly. I don't. Probably say. I think. Yeah. You want to hear that. Right. I'm. 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 So. I'm. 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 Just. Before. We. 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 Yeah. I'm. Sorry. So. I'm. 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 No. I'm. 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 Yeah. 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 Like. January. Yeah. I think we're taking a look at it. Yeah. Yeah. We'll see. But. Fresh. Yeah. Yeah. But. I'm. I'm. Very. Very. Excited. And. You know. Let me go take. My. My. Yeah. Yeah. I started. I was searching for them. Who was. They. They. How. She. She. Yeah. Oh, that's. Right. No. They're. 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 So. 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 So.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
That's. A while.
All right. Aloha and welcome this evening for joining us. Um, welcome and mahalo for our monthly town meeting. I am Mary Beth Leachak, president of the Waimea Community Association. Our other Waimea Community Association officers include our vice president Nancy Carsmith, our treasurer Victor Tom, um, our secretary, Michela Bruno, our directors Riley Smith, David Greenwell, Patty Cook, Chris Wong, Brian Ishijima, and Lani Oshin Chong. We are excited to have tonight's speakers with us who are three experts in the many facets of cybersecurity. We are streaming live on our Waimea Community Association Facebook and YouTube pages, which can be found also on our homepage of waimaitown.org. This recording will be made available for later viewing. We are happy to have those of you who could join us here in person as well as those who who are watching us online. If you've not already done so, we encourage you to become a member of the community association. You can do this at the sign and desk over there with Victor and Patty or by mailing a check to our Q box, the address is on the agenda. We are all volunteers, so your membership helps to pay for the hard costs of operating. We appreciate your support and we appreciate that Waimea as a community respects each other even when we don't necessarily always agree. We are grateful to be here this evening at the Keck Observatory. I would like to invite Andrew Dell over here to share a few housekeeping items.
Hello, everybody. We're just very pleased to be hosting the Waimea Community Association in this space, and we like to try to make this space here available to our community groups whenever, um, uh, whenever we can. So please, uh, make yourself at home. If you need the restroom, it is, um, go out the door and sort of carve around the wall to serve directly behind you is, uh, where the restrooms are. Yeah, for any route, for any reason, there is an alarm or an emergency, we will gather out in the, uh, parking lot. But otherwise, have a wonderful evening tonight.
Thank you. Um, presenters, keep your eyes on David Greenwell right here. He is our timer this evening. Uh, hello, David. For the presenters online, I will gently tell you when your time is up because you may not be able to see David. Um, we want to thank the team at Keck here, specifically Andrew and Keith Rishon, for helping with tonight's setup and our live streaming. All right. We have a slight change in our pool A for this evening. Um, who, uh, who David has been unable to join us. So Lani is going to do our pool A for us this evening. Mahalo, Lani, for participating at the last minute.
Our Father and Heaven, we come to be at the opening of our Waimea Community Association meeting. So grateful, Heavenly Father, to be able to use this facility and we're grateful for Keck Observatory for hosting us this evening. We're grateful for those who are in attendance and ask you to bless anyone who are on their way that they may arrive in safely. We ask you to bless all of the presenters, Heavenly Father, that whatever information they have to share with us this evening will be of benefit to us as members of the Waimea community. After the meeting is over, we ask that God will take us to our various homes and safety, and we do this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Lani. We appreciate you jumping in again. Uh, Tom David sends his regards who was unable to meet him. All right. Typically, we have community announcements, but this evening we're doing something a little bit different. So in lieu of our usual format, we have two special guests this evening to talk about, um, at length about two major events in Waimea this month. We, um, have another slight tweak to the schedule. Um, Micah will not be able to join us this evening, so he has sent his mom. Um, so, uh, if I could welcome up Trisha Hudson, who will be speaking about the Aloha Festival's Paniolo Parade. Nancy.
Aloha and thank you. Okay. Seven minutes. Okay, we have our Paniolo Festival here and Nancy, you can show uh, the events on Monday, September fifteenth. Let me show, we have our Country Bingo. Is there, uh, five to seven? More down. More down. Uh-huh. Yes. I'll be handing it to you. Yeah, there you are. There, on five to seven, we have our Country Bingo. And then from seven to ten is the Bingo After Dark. And this is all held at Kuyu Halei Hall. Uh-huh. Over there, so you all welcome to come. And there is a lot of games, a lot of prizes, um, all kinds of donations that we got for that event. On Tuesday, we have stampede line dancing, and that's also at Kuyu Halei Hall from six to ten. And there will be a competition for the best couple or the best single. Please come for that. On Wednesday, we have the Bonfire Mele and Mo'olele, and that will be held on our community land. So everyone can come into our community property next to Kanoka Aina. You guys know where that is out there? And that starts from three to seven. And it's a competition as well. They will talk about the, the song that people sing, that's the Mo'olele part. They're talking about whatever they're, they're singing, and then they will compete for, for the song contest as well. Some are similar to that of the, um, also contest. On Thursday, we have the annual Paniolo Cookoff, and that again is at the Kuyu Halei Hall from six to nine. And there's all kinds of categories. There's, um, and we have stew, chili, akke, we have sausage, we have smoked meat. So bring your best and compete for that. On Friday, we have our day making. And anyone can come as horse leads. So that's for the parade, for the pawus, who are going to help make their parade lanes. It's on Friday. It's on the.
Saturday.
But it, it starts from two o'clock till nine o'clock, the horse leads. On Saturday is the parade. That's our seventy-third annual Paniolo Parade. It's at, uh, Waimea Park. It starts off here across the street from law, we call it King Porter, and all the way down up here. Um, uh, McDonald's across to Ace, down to Ala'ouki'a, which is Bukalavi Ala'ouki'a into the Kalanishuli Park, District Park. And that's a little bit. And then we have a Ho'ona'olea as well as on there. We'll have a craft fair, vendors and food trucks outside. We have petting zoo.
Entertainment.
And we have a lot of entertainment. And Nancy Chatty's in charge of the.
Yes. 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 You're right. Um, so we're gonna have, right now, we have about sixty vendors. Uh, the craft vendors will be in the hall, food trucks outside, lots of great entertainment. Um, we're also looking for volunteers, and it's not too late to sign up for anything you have there. Or even if you'd like to throw a group or a bunch of kids or Ku'una into the parade, go right ahead. You can do all that online. Let us know. And.
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 And, and the website we have here is www.aolofestivalsisinafofae.com. And we can see all of this.
One more thing, Trisha. Now, last, last year was the first time that the homestead put this on, and we had butterflies the whole way through. But what happens is, um, it was Hawaii News Now sent a drone and a photographer, and they actually caught over twenty thousand people at the District Park and the parade. And we, and we, we couldn't believe it either, but the food trucks ran out of food at the right time. The vendors made a lot of money, so a lot of them are coming back this year. And we think that the reason was because we got a lot of the, maybe it was the, the old folks, the Ku'una who came out in the living treasures, right? We, we were really surprised, so we're gonna try and do that all over again.
Okay, and in this year, this last one is the road closure. So if you own a business, I went to your business. I went to every business in town, amazing. A lot. And then we had to give them this notice to, to closure of the road, so we can close the road. So that's where it's going from the park all the way across and up here, and then crossing over there by east and down to, um, Bukalavi and on to Ala'ouki'a and the Kalanishuli District Park. So please come out, please support our parade, our Paniolo Parade. And if you have any horses, any riding horse, and you have a trailer, we need you. Please come and let us know. Our number, uh, is my son's phone number, but you can look on, online and you'll see it. But I can give it to you as eight oh eight nine six zero one nine zero zero is his number. Thank you. Mahalo for having us. And.
Okay.
An M A in Hawaiian Studies and a P H D in Indigenous Politics from the University of Hawaii at Mauna Noa. Rooted in over two decades of Hawaiian archival and ethno-historical research, starting with Mo'olelo of his own kupuna. His dissertation explored the continuity of aloha aina in his home community of Ha'ama'a Kua Ikinah through the aina and mo'olelo-based research work of Huimau. As a cultivator of scenes and stories, Nohial draws upon the storytelling traditions of his ancestors to inspire collective action towards abundant futures for Ha'makua and all of Hawaii. Nohial is for me a personal inspiration and mentor and a role model for me as a steward of aloha aina. It was always at the end, both in passing and in passing and in the basket during the presentation, very much inspired to me, but I'm not.
Aloha, my co- co. Um, honored me for the invitation to share this evening. My name again is Nohial Peralto. Um, born and raised on this side of the island in Waikia'u initially, and then growing up really in the time that I spent with my grandparents. Um, they call it living in Ha'makua. Uh, and later in their lives, um, they spent their, their time here in Waimea on Ani Waimea Street. Uh, my grandfather, Daniel Miranda, and my grandmother, Vera Miranda. Um, that's kind of my, my initial connection to this place here in Waimea. Um, but growing up, this was home for me. This was our people here. Uh, in aina that you see um, in the picture here is Ko'ala Lele, uh, which is an area most people know today as Pa'ouilo. Um, it's, it's just he knows that I have Pa'ouilo closer to uh, dogs cookies, if you know what that is. Um, but I'm here representing Huimau, Waikialo Ulili or Huimau. It's a nonprofit organization that I was part of founding with my Ohana in two thousand and eleven. We're grassroots community organization. This is a little outdated photo of our staff. We have a few more now. Um, but just, you know, a, a group of Ohana from that community coming together around the sense of kulehana to care for our aina and our community there. And um, a bunch of young, young uh, local and Hawaiian folks that come together around this kulehana. We're actually the second largest employer in Pa'ouilo after Pa'ouilo School. So uh, that's been a big part of our work too, is really creating career opportunities in our community for young people who grow up in our community to stay and do meaningful work in this place. Our mission is about reestablishing the systems that sustain our community uh, through place-based educational initiatives and aina-centered practices that really cultivate abundance and promote collective health and well-being. And it's really with the vision um, that we call nohupapa Ha'makua, which is about empowering Ohana of our community to be able to live and thrive in Ha'makua for generations. Uh, the term nohupapa refers to people who have lived in a place for generations and that is becoming more and more rare today. Yeah. Um, all the different reasons that our young people are being forced to leave, our Ohana are being forced to leave. Uh, our work is really about uh, reestablishing the systems that allow our Ohana to live and thrive in this place for the generations to come. Drawing upon the models of our kupuna from the past. And we do this through a number of different programs uh, right in our community in Pa'ouilo and Ko'ala Lele. From our aina education programs where we host um, students from schools, from ages kindergarten all the way up through college. Um, we average about fifteen hundred to two thousand young people per year. Uh, at our aina, we're getting them out on the land, learning how to care for our land, how to grow food, how to live in a sustainable way. Um, through Hawaiian culture-based programming. We also have a um, food distribution program that we started during the pandemic. Um, we do monthly food distributions for kupuna and Ohana in our community. It's all fresh, locally grown foods from farmers right in our community, as well as the food that we're growing on our aina. And our aina restoration programs where we're restoring native ecosystems and actually cultivating and growing uh, primarily Hawaiian kupuna crops. Um, we stored approximately eleven hundred acres of aina. Uh, this is a picture of some of the groups actually that we hosted uh, on our aina in the last few years. Um, particularly some of the young people from Waimea. Uh, we've had Kanoka Aina, we've had Parker School, we've had H B A, we've had Waimea School all come to us over the years. Kanoka Aina comes regularly as well as Parker and H B A. Um, but like I was saying, we stored a little bit over uh, eleven hundred acres of aina in the au'upua of Ko'ala Lele. Um, from the shoreline all the way up to about the twenty-four hundred foot elevation. Any of you are familiar with Ku'akia'u Ranch? That's where my grandfather born and raised and worked his whole life. This aina goes from the shoreline up to the old boundary of Ku'akia'u Ranch. Uh, where we're really doing work to um, restore that aina to a, a place of abundance again. Um, and just real quickly, this is um, a, a little brief history of where we've come from. This is one of the earliest photos that we have of our area in Pa'ouilo from eighteen eighty. And it, and the infographic is one that we've done just to give you kind of what, what the au'upua' looked like in the time of our kupuna when it was thriving. Um, and of course, things changed quite drastically during the period of time when sugar plantation in that area really pure-cut uh, thousands of acres in the lowlands of Ha'makua uh, to make way for sugar, you know, and how that changed uh, the landscape drastically. As well as our community. And then that was replaced after Ha'makua Sugar closed in nineteen ninety-four by eucalyptus plantations. Uh, and that's what we largely have to, to deal with in our area today. But that's during, that's the time in which our organization was born. Um, this is a series of photos just to give you a sense of one of our major projects we call Kamaha'ulu or Ko'ala Lele. Where we are transitioning aina that is uh, growing with those eucalyptus plantations into growing food again for our community and ulu or breadfruit being the primary one. Um, so this was in May twenty twenty-one. Uh, we began clearing out eleven acres down in the lowlands, mulched all that back into the soil. Uh, this is a photo in the same spot uh, a little over about a year later. And then we started planting, planted with uh, keiki from as young as five years old all the way to kupuna in, in their eighties. And um, this is one of the more recent shots of that same area now. That was sugarcane and then eucalyptus and now is looking a little bit more like the landscape that um, our kupuna cultivated for generations in this area. That's really growing food for our community again, just like this photo that you see here from the eighteen eighties. And so, um, this work that we do, like I said, is really about not only drawing upon the foundation of our kupuna from the past and being inspired and guided by that ancestral knowledge, but really thinking towards the future of the future generations of this place. And how we really empower Ohana and our keiki to be able to live and thrive in Ha'makua for the generations to come with the hope that the work that we do in our au'upua' in Ko'ala Lele, which is one of just a hundred and thirty-six au'upua' in Ha'makua alone. Uh, really can hopefully inspire others to do the same in their au'upua all around this island and all throughout Hawaii. Knowing that each and every place is different and each and every place is going to have different challenges and different solutions. Uh, but hopefully as communities come together, like the associations like this will collectively be able to solve those problems in our communities in our unique ways and be able to chart a pathway forward for our future generations to be able to live and thrive in Hawaii for the generations to come. Mahalane.
Aloha so much for joining us this evening. Up next, we have um, our community policing officers. I'd like to welcome up Captain Valera and C P O Justin Cabanting to share this month's Waimea community policing updates. Looks like you brought everyone.
Thank you. Aloha. Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening for the meeting. At this time, I'd like to turn the mic over to our community police officer, Justin Cabanting, for some prime statistics.
Hello, everybody. Um, before I get into the prime statistics, uh, we're gonna try something a little different this month. We're gonna do, I'm trying to lock in a ice cream with a cup at the our new aloha keiki provisions over here. So it'll be a little bit later in the day, about eleven, but please come hang out with us, talk stories. Um, October first is National Coffee with a Cup Day, so I'll be at Starbucks on October first, about thirty in the morning. And last year, our newsletter should have all this information that I'm talking about in there once it gets finalized. Um, for August, we did have eight assaults, three burglaries, four criminal property damage with um, incidents. We did have thirteen thefts. Uh, the only ones that stood out to me was the online phone, um, online deaths. Um, just protect yourself the best you can. Somebody calls you and tells you to send them um, food and gift cards. That should be a red flag. Don't do that. Uh, one unauthorized control, so auto theft. And three, um, unauthorized entry into a motor vehicle. Um, but I will give it to Kui. I think we only have five minutes.
Give me a microphone, I see car, okay. It is, yeah, I have the traffic statistics. Um, there was only six major traffic accidents, uh, major traffic accidents in August. So that's, like I said before many times, the severe damage to a vehicle or injuries. So there are six. Um, there are three D U I R S. Fortunately, no fatalities in addition. And I believe we dealt with forty-two reckless driver complaints. That's when somebody called and somebody's driving uh, crazy on the road. Um, other than that, traffic statistics was pretty good.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, announcements from me, first and foremost, what's happening this Saturday, September sixth, everybody knows, right? What's that? There is a high hell, Dear Hawaii Youth Car Show, going to be held at the Waikoloa Plaza Shopping Center. Uh, festivities begin at ten A M. And uh, we are still accepting registration. If people are interested, I know we have close to forty vehicles already uh, signed up uh, with our youth entries. And if you need more information, you can see me, or you can see Officer Edward Lewis, who is in the back. He is the organizer of this event. Again, this Saturday, ten to four, Waikoloa Plaza Shopping Center. Um, and it is a youth car show. Yeah, so the kids are entering the vehicles. And we have vehicles of all types. And I believe there's going to be a Waikoloa uh, market going on the same day at the same place and some food trucks. So please come on down and support the event. The other thing I wanted to echo the two aunties that were here earlier, talking about the Panjillo Parade on Saturday, September twenty, at ten A M. Now, they showed the route of the parade, which totally cuts off Waimea Town. So keep that in mind. If you need to go from one side to the other, from about ten to maybe about eleven-thirty, Waimea Town, you can't get through. So if you work on the other side and you live on this side, make sure you get through before the road closes because you will not be able to get through. So keep that in mind and anticipate. Now, she used a number of twenty thousand spectators last year. And I think that's a pretty accurate number. So that's going to increase the amount of people to our small town. So please keep that in mind and um, share the town with them for that day. The last thing I wanted to mention is the Hawaii Police Department has migrated to a new domain. So many of our emails, they will be forwarded to the new email address, but it's going to end with hawaiipolice.gov. So what used to be hawaiicounty.gov will now be hawaiipolice.gov. So keep that in mind. But I believe for a period of time, if you still send it to the old email, it will be forwarded to the new email address. And with that, I think we're at seven minutes. So thank you very much. Yes.
You know, we know that there's central use drug problems in Waimea too. Maybe that could be another future presentation for us here.
Yes, uh, let me talk to you after the meeting so that I can get more information from you.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, officers. Also, I'd like to acknowledge Assistant Chief Berg here this evening, joining us. Thank you. And now to the main event, which is on cybersecurity and how to protect yourself from uh, uh, you're from fraud and uh, bad actors out there now. You know, we've all been hooked with some kind of uh, text message or email urging us to click on it. You know, it's, we heard just a minute ago, um, what somebody uh, from us or community about a vacuum, uh, who got an online fraud that occurred. But um, it's getting even more challenging, you know, for my colleagues at the bank. Uh, and with advent of artificial intelligence, you know, you're able to create voices from people you know. And um, it's really getting um, very stumped now. We have to be much more on guard. And here tonight, I have a, we, I'm really happy to have join us online. Um, some of my colleagues from the bank and some people that are, are the most knowledgeable about cybersecurity, cybercrime and how to protect yourself. First one up tonight is Jolie Chung. She manages our bank's Enterprise Operational Risk Division, where she focuses on reducing losses associated with fraud risk. Prior to joining the bank in twenty fourteen, Jolie was a practicing civil litigator with Chief Martin Feldman and a deputy prosecuting attorney with the City of County Honolulu. She's a certified anti-money laundering specialist and fraud professional. A graduate of Kamehameha Schools, Kama'uma. So Jolie, uh, did a computer crash. So you might not be able to sue her, but we can hear her and you have a presentation. So Jolie.
Hello, everyone. I'm hoping that you can hear me. Uh, please give me a thumbs up if you can. Okay, very good, very good. Perfect. Okay. Well, thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate the opportunity that I have to share with the communities of little tips and tricks that they can do to better prepare themselves and uh, becoming a victim of fraud. Uh, my goal today, if we can go to the next slide, um, will be that we will, one more slide, I'm sorry. We'll go over some of the top fraud scams. I'll give you some numbers, show you how bad it is. And then I'm going to give you a, some simple tips to protect yourself. And if time is allotted, we'll, I'll share with you a message from the former F B I and C I A Director Webster. So next slide, how bad is fraud really? The numbers that you see before you are from the Federal Trade Commission um, for the national numbers of twenty twenty-four. Um, if you look at the average reported loss, you'll see that most, it comes between a dollar to a thousand dollars. But there is a dramatic increase when you look at those over ten thousand dollar losses. Um, collectively over the year, we see that there was about twelve point five billion dollars lost to fraud. So fraud is almost an epidemic that we have here. And unfortunately, for the bank's perspective, our strongest line of defense is educating our customers because we cannot control what happens outside of our bank. So it's opportunities like this that we can reach out and have community outreach to the customer to kind of really let our, our community know these are things that we, you can do to better equip yourself to prevent fraud uh, and actual dollar losses. Next page, please. Next slide. Okay, so this is specifically for the state of Hawaii, uh, uh, for two thousand twenty-four. And what I really want to pay attention, have you guys pay attention to, is the dramatic increase in the number of reports and losses that you see starting at the age forty. So what we do know is that the younger adults tend to have a lot more incidence of fraud. But the elderly actually have the most dollars losses. Um, what is unfortunately true about this particular slide is that we know that these numbers are really just a drop in the bucket. Because as I mentioned, the, the population that loses the most amount of money is our elderly. And they are the individual or the population that report the least. So although you see here for the ages seventy and eighty, you know, it's four million, five million. Um, we know that that's significantly higher, just on the fact that we know they don't report. Uh, next slide. So today I'll be going or tonight I'll go over these five common or most popular frauds, I guess, in the industry that we're seeing now. Um, next slide, we'll start with investment scam. You guys are more, uh, the investment scam here is where fraudsters trick a victim into believing that there is a a, a credible value, too good to be true investment opportunity. Most commonly, we see it here in the industry relating to real estate, stocks and cryptocurrency. Red flags that you want to look at when you, when you're being approached by somebody talking about a good investment. You want to ask the questions, you know, how exclusive is this offer? Do you have any documentation? You know, um, what do you have to back this up? Because scammers will tell you that this is an exclusive offer, almost an inside trading type of opportunity. Um, that you have to act right now or you will lose it. The opportunity to purchase, it is extremely complicated. Um, they go, they will loop you in a variety, different directions as to try to explain to you what the opportunity is. And at the end of the conversation, the only part that you got is, I have to give them money. You don't understand what the actual investment is. Um, most notable is that they will ask you to send money or purchase, buy into the investment through unusual forms of payment. Um, I heard the officer mention gift cards. That is a very common one. It may be asked to purchase a cashier's check or wire money and those funds will be wired outside of the country. Once those funds leave the country, unfortunately, there is very little that the bank or law enforcement can do. Um, next slide. The second common slot, uh, common fraud that we see here at the bank and in the industry is a financial service impersonation scam. And it's this scam where somebody, a fraudster, will call you or send you a text to indicate that your account, your account has been compromised. Uh, I'm sure many of us here in the room and online have received the similar texts that you see online uh, that you see on the, the presentation. And you, your your instinct of fear is to immediately click onto that link. That is the one thing we do not want you to do. Once you click onto that link, you are entered basically to the fraudster's world. Um, they may be able to give you, have you download something, which actually will connect to your phone. Or they may, we tell you that they need additional information from you and urge you to provide confidential information such as your T I N number or your social security number, your account number, your username and password. What we have seen most notable with financial services impersonation is, and this one is very dear to my heart, is because fraudsters will try to exploit what makes Hawaii Hawaii. Do you go to the next slide? The, the culture that we have here is we are, we tend to be very trusting, especially our kupunas. In doing so, we tend to submit to any individual who's willing to help us because we believe the best interest that they really are genuine, they're concerned for our well-being. So a common red, a common uh, telephone or financial, financial fraud telephone call will go something like this. Aloha, this is Jolie calling from First Hawaiian Bank. I'm going to use Mary Beth as my example. Uh, Mary Beth, I, I hate to tell you this, but it looks like there have been several transactions on your account. Three of which include a ten thousand dollar purchase at Hermes for three different bags. Um, did you make those purchases? And instinctively, you'll, she'll say no. Um, the caller will then say, okay, well, I'm glad that I got ahold of you. I want to make sure that I can put a hold on your account to make sure they don't do any more transactions. What I need from you first is just to verify your I D. Can you give me your, your social security number? And in fear, they disclose it. Thank you for sharing that for me. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and send you a, a, a link. Can you go ahead and click that? We're verifying that your phone number is correct. They'll send the link to you. You think you're, you're helping and protecting yourself and the victim presses the link. Then they'll say, okay, I'm now in, um, I'm going to access your account and put a, a lock on your account so that no further fraudulent charges can be done. Please give me your email, your account number, and I'll have to have you reset your password. I'm going to send you another link. When they send you that link to reset your password and you reset your password, what you didn't realize is that they are actually obtaining your new password for you. You are giving them access to either your, your, your mobile device, your laptop. Or what we have also told is some people will tell them what the unique PIN code is, that temporary PIN code. If anyone has reset your password, you know that you have to enter a multi-factor code. They will tell the person on the call to verify that. And what you've done is you've allowed the fraudster to reset the password to your account, your mobile banking account. Mobile banking is a fantastic tool, makes it easy, makes it, um, you can do fast transactions. Uh, but there's come some risks with that. Never, 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 never share your one-time passcodes with anyone. The bank definitely will never ask you that. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, the next one is our technical support impersonation scam. The most, uh, the target audience for this tends to be our elderly. Again, because fraudsters are exploiting the fact that many elderly uh, individuals are not familiar or tech savvy. Okay, so here, tech support fraudsters will impersonate service providers. And they'll typically contact you through pop-up messages. When they do that, they'll tell you to, uh, instill fear that your computer has either been hacked or is be at threat of being compromised or hacked. And they want to prevent this for you and probably for a charge of just, it's thirty-nine ninety-nine. You click on the link, you talk to the, the service provider who is a fraudster. He asks you, can I, can, I'm going to need you to download, um, what we call, it's, that's a software that will give them remote access to your account or to your laptop. And what you don't realize is that when they do that, they are now shadowing or gathering whatever information they have as you keystroke your password and username into your account. They may also ask you for additional confidential information. All of which helps them gain access to you and your, and your personal information. Next one, please. Okay, government impersonation scam. This one, unfortunately, we've seen a rise here, at least in Honolulu. Um, here we is when a fraudster will impersonate a government official. It may be police officer. We've seen social security, we've seen um, uh, homeland security. Uh, we've seen judicial, people polls as judicial officers. And they call the victim threatening that you are being investigated for, like, it could be you are investigated for being in a, a human trafficker. You are investigated for looking at child pornography. Pornography. You are being investigated for not appearing at jury, uh, jury duty. Um, and they, they create this sense of fear and they say, but to get rid of it, you can do one of two things. You can send your fine or fee to, and they'll give you all information. Or you can meet at the police station and we'll go ahead and book you tomorrow. Uh, or we'll come down to your house in an, in an hour or so and pick you up. They really put this fear that you're going to have some criminal impact if you do not comply with the money. Um, what is most notable about this particular crime is that we have actually seen it tiptoe to face-to-face um, contact. We have had uh, incidents here in Honolulu where the fraudsters are meeting the victims in parking lots and exchanging cash. And only after they walk away, um, you know, the victim tells their loved ones, I just gave twenty thousand to a, a law enforcement officer who had what appeared to be not a uniform, but was explained to have been in plain clothes detail. Um, slacks and aloha shirt and took away the money from an elderly lady. Um, so this one is kind of tip, it, it's a little bit more dangerous because it's no longer behind a screen. We do see that this is actually tiptoeing into face-to-face contact. Next slide. The last one that I want to go over is the romance scam again. This is one that is the prime victim. Tends to be our elderly community because, you know, people are the elderly community is lonely and looking for companionship, and that is completely understandable. Uh, but we have fraudsters who troll dating apps and social media, looking for individuals seeking companionship. They will build this rapport with the individual, not ever having telephone calls face-to-face or being able to meet in person. But over time and relatively quickly, will begin to try and uh, obtain money or ask for money. But over time and relatively quickly, will begin to try and, uh, obtain money or ask for money or ask for, uh, gift cards, uh, to assist with medical bills, with, um, a family expenses or also to purchase a ticket to fly to Honolulu. What you don't realize is all that money is gone and the person will never show up. Um, this one happens probably the most often with our elderly and is re, is reported the least by our elder co, uh, community. So, next, next slide. The genesis of all this is that all fraud is based on trust and fear. The fraudster works when they can build a false sense of trust within you and create a, a strong sense of fear or urgency. So if you, my hope is that through this presentation, you will be able to understand how a fraudster operates and you'll be able to quickly decide whether or not you are trying to, you are being scammed and then give you the tools to walk away. And I've come up with a really simple acronym, if you go to the next slide. That if you don't remember anything I say today, remember tips. Okay, so the first letter, next slide will be T. Anytime you have a com, uh, communication with an individual and generally it's an unsolicited, uh, communication. And there are threats that are being made in that conversation. If you don't do this, you will get arrested. If you don't give me money, we will come to your house. If you don't do this, I'm going to tell the world that you are a terrible person. That is li- likely a scam. The next letter is I, and that is immediate. If in the course of your conversation with the person, there are languages that you have to act now. If you don't act now, it's gone. There is an immediate response, an immediate course of action, call to action on your part. It is likely a scam. P, next letter is promise. If during the course of your conversation, you are being promised something by an individual, generally again, unsolicited. And that promise tends to be something a little too good to be true. Definitely something that is out of the blue. You are being scammed. And the last one is secrecy. If your conversation, if the conversation you're having with someone, that person tells you, do not tell anyone. And sometimes they'll say, don't tell anyone because no one will understand. Don't tell the bank because if you tell the bank, they'll tell the government and the government's going to steal your money. You know, don't tell, um, your wife, because if you tell your wife, we'll have to arrest them as a, arrest her as an accomplice. If there are any levels of secrecy in your conversation, it is likely to be a scam. So at the end of the day, if you're talking to somebody and you hear threats, immediate promising or secret type of language, I'm going to give you the permission to hang up the phone, shut your computer off, walk away, delete the texts. Do not click on any links, do not click on any, um, have call, don't call the numbers that are on the screens. All you want to do is separate yourself as quickly as possible from the perpetrator. Um, if you do have questions about your account, what we want you to do is go ahead and contact your bank, but use the contact information that you find on the back of your credit cards or that you find on your account information, your statements. Do not ever call the number that they provide you in your message, nor the, nor the telephone number that they tell you to call. Don't trust caller ID either, please. Okay. I'm not sure if we have time, I don't, I don't see a timer here. But I would love for you to listen to, uh, he, the, uh, former CIA FBI Director Weber. Um.
Hey Julie, how long is the, um?
It's like two minutes. It's already, actually, I think it's like one minute, one minute thirty seconds, relatively short.
We've gotten trouble from the timer.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure if you guys can hear it.
Yeah, there's quite a lot of stuff to take. These are criminals who want to take on the enemy. Your word card is probably something you say, but it's, it's, don't let criminals try to do that. If you are, but then the topic is by all the people. I'm terrified of that.
Yeah, and that's the bottom line. If it can happen to him, the director, CIA, Director of the FBI, it can happen to anybody. Um, and my hope is that you will take the information that I shared with you today and you will share it with your family. Um, educate as many people as you can about it. Uh, we can at the bank, we really value our customer relationship, so we try to do as much as we can. But we understand that we have to rely on the customer being aware of first spotting it and trying to detect it, because that is the first line of defense that we have against this fraud epidemic. So, thank you everyone for having me, I appreciate you.
Julie. Thank you everyone. Uh, next up is Adam Palmer. Adam is our Chief Information Security Officer at First Hawaiian Bank. In this role, he leads the cybersecurity division that safeguards First Hawaiian Bank IT assets and help maintain a safe digital banking environment for First Hawaiian Bank customers. Every year, you know, we have audits from the FBI suit. And there is a special team of IT auditors, so they go around and and, um, inspect every bank every year and especially their IT divisions. So Adam, like me, has dealt, has to deal with them every year. Adam is an MBA from the University of Hawaii and twenty years of cybersecurity, over twenty years of cybersecurity experiments. Adam?
Yeah, thank, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to, to talk with you. Uh, as I was introduced, I lead the cybersecurity program for the bank. So my primary role, uh, is focused on ensuring that you have the, that I protect the assets of the bank, that I protect all of our networks and systems. Uh, and I just want to talk to you a little bit about some of the security features and, and also some of the types of attacks that we try to defend against to ensure that you have the safest possible banking experience with First Hawaiian Bank. Uh, and everything that you, you do with us, uh, online and, and through any digital mean. So a, as I mentioned, I've, I've been in cybersecurity for close to twenty-five years. Um, I actually just unique about my background, um, in addition to my connection with Hawaii. Uh, I was a former US Navy officer stationed at Pearl Harbor. Uh, I also, uh, lived in Europe for about ten years where I was a senior executive on the cyber risk team for the largest bank in Europe. Um, and I also led the, uh, United Nations Global Program Against Cybercrime, uh, for, for close to two years, um, where I was training law enforcement around the world uh, on cybercrime investigation, uh, and other types of, of managing cybercrime cases. So, uh, that's a little bit, bit of background, uh, about me. I've been in my role at First Hawaiian Bank for a little over four years now. Uh, and just to talk with you again, a little bit about what a, uh, the bank's program to protect uh, your safety, uh, when you, when you work with us and to protect, uh, your experience at First Hawaiian Bank, some of the things that we do. So we do look at it as a very important mission to protect the confidentiality, the integrity and the security of all of our customers and all of your business information. Uh, we follow very closely and, and align with regulatory requirements uh, to make sure that we uphold, uh, appropriate privacy standards for you as well. So we try to make sure that we're always doing what, at the best we can uh, to be in compliance with all of the standards that are appropriate and to make sure that we're protecting the privacy of your information. Uh, as a bank, we are highly regulated. In fact, every year we are regulated, or I'm sorry, we're examined, uh, very closely by both state and federal regulators. Um, this might not mean that much to you when I say we're aligned to the NIST cybersecurity framework. But the NIST is a acronym that stands for the National Institute of Security and Trade. And this is the, um, basically this, I'm sorry, tele, National Institute of Standards and Telecommunications. The, uh, the NIST framework is a, uh, it's the standard global framework recognized by most mature organizations, uh, for, uh, how you approach cybersecurity. So it provides guidelines on the types of controls and the types of information, of ways that we should, uh, manage our cybersecurity program. And, and it's just important to note that we, that we do that. Uh, so this is not the bank making up what we think is appropriate, but us really trying to align ourselves with the industry best practices and the government standards for a cybersecurity program. Uh, we actually have a twenty-four by seven, uh, security operations center. Uh, and we really try to make sure that we respond effectively, uh, with, to, to every incident that, that we become alerted to. Uh, and all those requirements, and we have a, a extensive governance program. We have an architecture team that looks at all of our new security requirements. And we're constantly looking at threat intelligence about new threats. So just to talk about some of the things that we, that we defend against. Um, so as a bank, um, you know, the famous line of, that the bank robber once was asked, why do you rob banks? It's because that's where the money is, right? A, a very kind of simplistic, but, but common sense answer. And cyber criminals, uh, do try to attack banks. Uh, so we, again, you know, that's, that's just as the physical world, we're pretending, protecting the digital world. Uh, and it comes in a couple of different forms. So a lot of it you've probably heard in the news. So things like nation-state attacks. Uh, there are, uh, national governments, uh, in, around the world that sponsor, uh, some actual, uh, sometimes military units, uh, to, to, sometimes to, to gain monetary rewards. They, uh, function almost as cyber criminals, uh, to, to obtain money, to, to fund different programs or gain information. Uh, sometimes we could become, uh, the target of something like cyber warfare, which is a, a very real threat when we see conflicts around the world in different parts of the world. But sometimes the cyber weapons, um, that we could get caught in the middle of that. And with the large military presence in Hawaii, it's always possible that a, um, a hostile government could launch a attack against a US military group uh, in Hawaii. And unfortunately, we could become collateral, uh, a collateral target because we are sharing some similar networks and, and within the same environment. So this is something that we're very aware of is, is cyber warfare. I'll make one other note about this is that, um, many of the cyber weapons we see used on the cyber battlefield, if I can call it that, o- often, very frequently in the past, quickly become adopted by cyber criminals. Uh, so it's something that, that we have to stay aware of because we know that, um, the cyber criminals will watch what the military does uh, and quickly try to adapt, uh, that for, for cybercrime purposes. Uh, and then of course, cyber criminals, which is a lot of the focus of what Jolie just spoke with you about. Uh, so we do try to monitor and, uh, within our own network, I'm primarily focused on the staff within uh, First Hawaiian Bank and ensuring that, that we defend against phishing attacks, against sensitive data in our network, that we make sure our own employees don't click on, uh, phishing links or fall for fraudulent schemes. Uh, we also, of course, are very concerned about ransomware type schemes. Uh, ransomware is when often cyber criminals might try to launch an attack against our bank and it has been successful against some other companies that you may have seen in the news, uh, where our systems can encrypt or disable, uh, if we're a victim of such an attack. Now, we do have controls in place, uh, to, to try to prevent this. And so far, we have been successful in that. But obviously, this is a, a real concern that we take steps to try to mitigate the risk and prevent this from happening where, where an attacker, uh, encrypts our files, prevents us from our, from accessing data. And then they will try to ex, basically extor, it's extortion, uh, to demand a ransom in exchange for, for decrypting the files and providing access. So again, a very successful, very malicious attack that's been used in other, um, environments, uh, that, that we take very seriously uh, in our own, in, in, with inside First Hawaiian Bank. So just to follow up again, real quick on, on tips for you and thoughts, I think Jolie had a lot of great advice. Uh, we want you to be safe online, we want you to be safe in your banking with us. Social engineering attacks may be the most common, um, form of, and the, the low, most frequent form of attack that we see. Uh, and this involves things like phishing, which is a lot of what Jolie also described, like email links that you may be sent or, uh, those, those types of, um, messages you may get where you click on something, uh, and become a victim, you download the malware. But, but consider that there are a lot of other ways that attackers can, um, try to, to defraud you. So things like smishing, these are just variations. This would be through text messaging, uh, things like, uh, looking at, uh, you know, your, your phone, uh, through phone phishing, they can, you know, making these calls and somebody impersonating the bank. Uh, this is why we have programs like Banks Never Ask That, to try to make you aware, uh, of what we're doing. Um, and, and that we don't ask, uh, personal questions about your account or for passwords, uh, through your phone or through text messaging. Uh, or, you know, just generally collecting information from you through social media, where an attacker might learn things about you through your Facebook account or your LinkedIn account, uh, and then try to use those facts, uh, to harm you. I have down here a couple of phone numbers where you can report, uh, if you are concerned about something or you, you are concerned, you may have been a victim of one of these attacks. You can also always visit one of our branches on any island, uh, and talk to, to the branch and report this as well. And I have some resources on my last slide, which I'll just get to you, uh, for a second. You know, and I do want to say, you know, uh, w- we very much want you to stay safe. Uh, unfortunately, we aren't able to provide, um, direct IT support or remediation uh, for your devices that are entirely outside of our network. So again, the limits of my, uh, capability to, to, to monitor and manage are primarily, uh, or exclusively within First Hawaiian Bank's network. Uh, so that's why it's so important for you to, to be aware of these attacks uh, and to follow some of these safety tips with your own devices. Uh, and what's, you know, what's the best offense against these? It's a good defense, so using all the tips that Jolie shared with you. But just making sure that your information and your assets are locked down so that you're prepared, uh, and take preventative steps. So it's things like using what we call multi-factor authentication for critical areas like access to your bank account or your email login. So this means that you have two forms of identity. Uh, maybe you get a text, a text to your phone that confirms that you're the person entering your password. This makes it very difficult so that if an attacker say steals your password, they don't have access to all of your accounts, right? Uh, and they would, there's a second form of identity that, that they would have to have to be able to, to access your account. Um, you know, always of course, follow good practices. We, we never want to see a password that's like one, two, three, four, five, or A, B, C, D, E. Use complex passwords, things people can ju, guess, uh, that are random and change them, uh, frequently. And again, always call us or log into your bank account to verify that if, if somebody's expressed you a concern about your, uh, account. Uh, just be very aware, it could be a scammer who's talking to you and always make, you know, call us or, or on a phone number that you trust or come into the branch and talk to us where you know that you're talking to a trusted source. Uh, and I think the last, uh, number, fourth point on here is don't be afraid to update, uh, your, the devices that you use. One of the best protections that you can have is having a simple, uh, safety test, state, simple safety features like antivirus protection, uh, on, on your devices, having it up to date and patched. Um, uh, uh, devices like your phone and your laptop. Uh, these often, when you get these updates, security updates, often they contain security updates uh, and patches or security fixes. Uh, sometimes they're based on real-world threats that the companies are, are, um, aware of. So I always try to, to, as soon as I see these updates, make sure that I do that as soon as possible, uh, because that's really a great security, uh, step that you can take. And I will say as a bank, we, we do the exact same thing with our devices. We try to make sure that those are patched and updated as quickly as possible to have all the latest security features. Uh, so just kind of, you know, some, some closing thoughts on, uh, resources. And I believe some of this was provided to you maybe in a paper handout, uh, as well. But there are resources online, the government, the CISA, uh, you see on the left has information. If you go on to the B Cyber Smart, uh, their webpage, you can look at some, some more in-depth, uh, resources. There's a group called the National Cybersecurity Alliance, really great folks that have information on their Stay Safe Online campaign. Uh, I've mentioned a few times, the American Bankers Association also has a website with Banks Never Ask That. Uh, this really goes to the heart of, of Jolie's message where she was talking about, you know, not giving out personal information, not providing your password, confirming who you're talking to. And then, um, you know, And then, you know, so there's a lot of other information you can look at on these trusted websites. And then FightCyberCrime.org also has a lot of information. And even if you're a small business as well, they have information that you can use to protect yourself there. So with that, that's that's my last slide. And I want to just thank you and say it's my pleasure. I hope some of those tips were helpful. You know, and I'll maybe just closing and say that you know, these attacks continue to continue to evolve. Obviously, a bank, we're the largest bank in the state of Hawaii. We have a robust cybersecurity program. We take it extremely serious to try to protect you as much as possible. But a big part of it has to be also your awareness and your and your efforts to also protect your information within your own devices as well. So thank you and my pleasure to talk.
It's hard to find passwords. I mean, it has to be at least like fifteen characters. It's super long and kind of chinty. Like sit down and think about it. Okay, finally, our last presenter comes from the United States Secret Service. Therese Richards started her career as an analyst on the Presidential Protective Division in Washington DC. She's currently assigned to the Honolulu Field Office, White Pacific Cyber Secure Cyber Broad Task Force, working in the United States Secret Service Honolulu District Digital Forensic Lab, providing tactical guidance, cybersecurity training, and forensic support to special agents and law enforcement partners with oversight communities. Therese Richards is a native of Papua Korea and a graduate of Kamehameha Schools, Breaking Young University Pro Bowl, and the George Washington Universities. She has an ongoing background in the tech world since nineteen ninety five. So she's also a side before working in government. She worked at eBay, Akamai Technologies. And she's had various information technology and digital investigations and computer forensic positions in the United States Secret Service. So Therese.
Thank you so much. Aloha, everybody. It's I'm feeling very fortunate to be able to speak with the community that I have a connection to. My niece was the first and only New Year's baby born in North Hawaii Community Hospital. She was born on one, 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 one at twelve oh one. So that's our claim to fame in Waimea. But I feel that the speakers before me, Jolie and Adam, did such an amazing job. We all kind of have the same things that we want to communicate with everyone. So you can tell that that's the ongoing problems that we're facing. For me, Secret Service, most people think that all we do is protect the president. We do so much more. And then in Hawaii, the main thing for our field office is investigating financial crimes. And back in the day, the Secret Service used to do most of our investigations on counterfeit currency. Currently, the most prolific counterfeiter in the entire nation is on the Big Island. So that keeps us busy. But otherwise, all of the financial crimes that we are investigating have an online nexus. And I came from a job that was pretty intense in DC. I was on the president's detail, constantly working, constantly trying to protect the people that were a part of the president's family and his National Security Advisor, Chief of Staff, to make sure that they were all alive by the end of the day. And that kind of work and intensity brought a lot of fulfillment. When I came home and my shift went to financial crime investigations, I was starting to feel the pain of so many people getting scammed in Hawaii at all different ages. And the reporting factor that Jolie brought up, that's the thing, people don't realize that they're getting scammed and they don't report. And many times I have to hear from loved ones that tell me, I think my mom, I think my auntie, grandpa, whatever is getting scammed. And that's the way that I get pulled into it is people will make a report with HPD, Honolulu Police, Maui Police, anything. And then if the suspect is not from Hawaii, in Hawaii, then it gets changed over to our jurisdiction that we can investigate it on a federal level. So I have a slideshow that I prepared. However, it does go over a lot of things that were already said. So I'm going to just give some examples of. Okay, let me see. Sorry, this isn't coming up right now. But I will just give some examples of the kinds of things that were seen. It usually happens very cyclically in Hawaii. Like right before school starts at UH, for example, or any of our colleges, there's a lot of rental scams where people will take pictures of stuff that was posted previously or homes that there's just pictures of. They will make pretend that it's near to a college and try to collect all the fees upfront, first month's rent, last month's rent, a security deposit. They try to throw in all the utilities. And people that are not from here, coming to live here in Hawaii, will fall for that. They'll send all their money. And they show up and the place is already rented, or it's people that have been living there for years. And they're out of all that money with no way to trace who that came from. Right now, another popular scam that people are dealing with is getting a text message saying that you have a package in customs. This has been around for a while. And it's a very low fee, like four dollars and twenty cents. All of us coincidentally have a package that we ordered that we're waiting for. And we think, oh, okay, well, this is here in order for it to be released. Let me just click on the link. I'll pay the four dollars, twenty cents on my credit card and then I'll receive my package. But with that, you're opening yourself up to going to a webpage that they created where they are getting all of your information. And that four dollars and twenty cents that you think you're spending on that might be thousands of dollars that they're charging against your credit card for future purchases. And many times people are not checking their accounts to see if any, you know, if there's any unusual activity there. I'm trying to bring this PowerPoint up so I could just show. So I'm so sorry for the wait, but like Jolie mentioned, it's people that I would say that are above my age are very considerate. Your etiquette of how you handle things are answering every call that comes in. And so in in that, it causes you to listen and participate and answer and respond to people that are trying to scam you. A lot of my time I spend in Bangkok, Thailand. I'm actually going there again on Monday. Because we have specifically found that the people who are scamming Hawaii people from call centers through all of the methods that were discussed earlier, like romance scams, investment scams. The latest one being withdrawing twenty thousand dollars and putting it into a cryptocurrency kiosk, which I can explain more on. And we have literally found the people who are scamming our Hawaii victims. They keep very elaborate spreadsheets, very long. And any kind of conversation that they're having with people, they will have a column for each thing that shows, okay, this lady, let's just use my mom's name. So say they call my mom, Deborah Richards. And she's talking about her grandkids saying, oh, I'm sorry, I have to get off the phone because I have to go pick up my grandkids. She mentions their name. It will have so many details about her and her life and every single thing that they talk about so that they can further manipulate her, knowing all the things that are meaningful and valuable to her. That's what we found with this. And then many of the scammers that directly linked to all of my victims here, which are typically eighty-three-year-old women all throughout the state. Most times their husbands have passed. They have the money from their life insurance. And they lose, they lose that money, thinking that they're either in a romantic relationship with people that they have not met before, that keep asking for money or keep asking for assistance. And and then they lose it all. I had one victim that actually, her daughter reported to me and she lost everything. She lost her home. She lost her the life insurance from her husband. She was sitting in her garage on a folding chair, moving to California because she thought that she was in a romantic relationship with a guy. I found all this evidence and showed her that it was a thirty-five-year-old woman. And she didn't believe me. She was like, I'm talking to a man. But for four dollars and ninety-five cents, anyone can get a voice altering software that changes it where I could input, okay, I was born in nineteen seventy-eight in Hawaii. I moved away to the mainland and it would create a voice that is just like mine. I've done it before to fool my mom, calling her to just ask if she could give me her credit card number over the phone really quick because I needed it to pay for her medication. And she fell for it. And this is my own mom that knows my voice that I talk to every single day. So there is that available. There's also AI technology that can take any instance like this, for example, me talking to you guys tonight. It can parse the internet if this is going to stay as a live feed on your website. And it can put all my words together. I just type in a statement of anything that I want to say if I were a scammer. And it will show my voice doing that. That's another trend that we're seeing. And I'm so sorry, I don't have the visuals for this. For some reason, my screen is not sharing properly. But we have the grandparents scam. And in every group that I talk to, and this is actually my motivation for doing this, is that I want to empower people. I get to a point where it's the earliest that I'm notified of a report of someone getting scammed is thirteen months. So much happens in that time, especially if it's involving cryptocurrency. It gets, goes through exchanges and mixers and the money is really gone. And it hurts me to know that here I devoted so much of my life to helping the first family of the United States. And I can't even help my own community in trying to get funds back for the people who have lost money within our state. And so the best thing I found that I can do, which I actually have some statistics of my own, is to empower people that the kindness and the way that we are as Hawaii people that Jolie mentioned often gets exploited is to empower you to hang up, to say no, to not continue the conversation. Just like we've always learned, if something is too good to be true, it probably is. Isn't something to go, we shouldn't go down that road. But they will build upon your trust. They will build rapport. They will do everything to connect with you so that you let your your guard down. And then they are doing everything based on fear. So they're going to rush you like anything in life psychologically. If you feel rushed, you're not going to think rationally, you're not going to make the right decisions. And that's what they prey on. So one of the more recent scams that have been happening to a lot of victims here in Hawaii is they get the tech support scam. A black box pops up on their screen and it says, you have been hacked. Please call this number. It's either going to be for Microsoft or for Apple. And they provide a number to you where you're just calling the scammer in a vulnerable state, thinking that they're going to help you. They send a link to you, you click on it, and now they are able to remotely get into your computer where in the background, they're running what's called keystroke logging software. With that, they're able to see what you type in. And their first their first thing that they always will do is let's check your bank accounts and make sure that the hackers did not get into your accounts. So you log on, knowing your online banking information, type it in, and they're getting your username and your password. And again, another psychological thing is that most times with our bandwidth of memory for passwords, our password for one thing is usually the same password for everything else. So once they get that and they're seeing your dollar amounts in your bank accounts and having that keystroke logger program to know your username and password, it can get very scary very quickly. Many times they want to extort you. So they'll use that same username and password or your name and combination of information that they got from you to change your Facebook account or to log in and mimic you or create another account. And then it just goes downhill from there. And I know this sounds a lot of, like a lot of doom and gloom, but these are the realities of the things that are happening in our state. I think it's very easy for us to think, oh, this doesn't happen here. It happens elsewhere. But every single day I get about fifty-two police reports that are sent to my account for just things that are happening that fall into my purview of needing to do a forensic exam on a phone or to help kupuna or our young victims who are also having the same amount of things. It's just for different stuff. So yeah, I'm so sorry. Let me just try to share this because I really want to show some other things that I'm I'm hearing are happening on on the Big Island. Oh, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that? Did you just say I had three minutes?
Yes, you have three minutes and your presentation is going great. Don't worry, you don't have a PowerPoint. It's very moving.
Okay, okay. Yes. So the one that I was going to talk about, and this can be just my last wrap up of what I'm hearing about of what's happening on the Big Island, is that that people are going into stores. They'll go to like Target, Walmart, whatever it is, Safeway, and where all of the gift cards are, they will go and grab a bunch out. And they'll scratch it off as they walk around the store and take pictures of it. And then they'll go onto Craigslist and sell those. Oh, I'm so sorry. Sell those those gift cards. So say it's for a hundred dollars and they'll sell it for fifty on there. And then once somebody comes in, like they'll go back, put it back onto the shelf right within that that gift card pile. And a person will come wanting to buy a gift for a friend. They grab it off and then they go to the checkout, pay for it. And then that is you know, that that person lost money. When they give that gift card to somebody else, it's gone. There's no money on there. And so that's just something that I'm seeing there. So please, just as a quick little awareness, if you are being, going to get a gift card for somebody, look on the back, see that the information is covered on the barcode. That's my main thing that I'm hearing from there. And then also the twenty thousand dollars needing to change into putting into a cryptocurrency ATM to protect it. So those two things, I just want to empower you that on these spreadsheets that I was talking about from Thailand, the thing where all of them, every single group that we have arrested people, they will all put at the end, if someone was vulgar to them. And I really don't want to encourage swearing. However, all of them said that they have cut off communications and they will no longer communicate with somebody who has said the F word to them or has been vulgar to them because it actually it goes against their own religious background. And so you know, if you want to yell, if you want to hang up, if you want to say things that you normally wouldn't say, but yet protect yourself from the average forty thousand dollar loss of each of my victims. I've gone from forty thousand dollars to three point three million just this year so far of loss. So protect yourself, hang up, and you don't get involved in these scams. So if you have any questions, I had a handout that I I put out and I believe my information is there. If you want to contact me, if you think you may be a victim of a scam, feel free to call me with that information that's there.
Yes, and we have Teresa's handout available by the door. And so mahalo to all three of our speakers. But right now, if you have any questions, Auntie Lani has the mic, please raise your hands. If you have a question that is very specific to you and your circumstances, this might not be the forum to ask it in. That might be a direct, a time to reach out directly. If this is a more general question, this is similar to when we had, you know, our friends at the Tax Authority. So did you have a question there? Okay, go ahead.
If if you go, they want to meet up with you, can you tell them to ask for ID, like three, three times ID before they, you know, give you the money? Give them the money to check out just to see if they're legitimate or not? Or like, can you ask them to go to the police station to meet up instead of going to a restaurant or a, you know, remote area?
Definitely. If I can answer, I would say both things are great recommendations. And not necessarily needing the three forms of ID. Because I think most people don't really normally carry that on them. But it is a good idea to just say, oh, meet me at the police station, verify things on your own. It's always great to go to the the website or whatever it is that they're talking about. But also that's a resource that you can use me for if you have my information there is to to double check, but ask those questions. But ask those questions, be empowered. These are regular people that are getting paid as scammers. And what I found is many of them are Indian, um, operating out of Thailand. And you would think that with karma and all that kind of stuff that they're dealing with, but they have specifically told me that the amount of money that they off of each person that they're scamming is worth more money than anything of the highest people in politics in their country. And so the fact that they're able to provide for their family off of that amount that they're making off of each person, challenge them. They're investing that time in you to scam you. You might as well challenge them and, and make the same investment if you're going to stay on. But my best advice is to always hang up because if it's something important, um, you will get an email or you will get something in the mail about it. No federal employee has any time. So if you're getting messages from the IRS that are saying, you know, um, you need to provide this information that you know is irrelevant, like just don't even get involved because it will get to the point where you will have a phone call and you will have something in the mail that comes to you. But always verify.
Yeah, I think it's for any of the three of you. Um, if you're looking at being preventative for yourself, right? What type of software, um, or protocol would you use? Like, for example, I use Norton for everything I own. And we do also do freezing your accounts for protection. And, you know, freezing your credit cards and everything like that. So no one can have the ability to get into anything you own. And I think someone said something, what is the risk for the island for us to be hacked from this cyber, you know, like the common person being hacked versus a company being hacked? You know, like, oh, we got a big cyber attack on a bank versus being a cyber attack on a common man. My last question.
Um, so I will let um, answer with regards to the software. Um, with regards to, um, I think your second question was, what? Sorry, I think the second type of question is what can we do? Is that, is that right?
It's, it's preventative. So in other words, let's say I own Norton on, on all my devices. And using the protocol that they ask for, did you, one of these things they asked you, and I was told a very long time.
I'll just repeat it because she's not going to be able to hear you because you don't have the mic. So the question would be like, what, how can we prevent it, you know, using Norton, any of those kinds of things with the software?
Yes. So I'll let Adam talk about the software, which ones to use. But my personal opinion is everyone should be using some sort of software. I think what people don't put value on more so than software though, is your passwords, your usernames and passwords. And that's something that I'm a really big advocate of. For, if you think of it like an equation, there's username and password. You need the two to access something. For most people in this room, I could probably guess most of your guys' usernames. Um, because it is typically involving your last name sometime. And most of the times for some of our online accounts, it's our actual email address. So that alone, I already have half of the formula. And like Charisse says, most people reuse the same password over and over again. So once we're able to break one access point, and it might be something that is really, really, it seems de minimis, like your secret, your frequent flyer account, your Mikey account at Foodland. You know, who's going to hack that? There's no credit card information there. It's just my email, my username, and it tells me how many points I have. Well, if you are like the common person who uses the same password for everything, if I could get into Foodland's, my K E program, if I could get into this shave ice frequent company program, something that relatively would have a lower, not that Foodland does, but something that would have a lower security, it's very likely that I could use that same password and get into a lot of things. So I'm not so much concerned with software, but I am a very, very big proponent of using password managers. Um, that it will randomize or on your phone, there's pa, there's passcode. It, it's, it can randomize your passwords and you actually don't have to remember it because it's in the phone. And then you, you would use multi-factor authentication to verify, yes, this is my account. This is the same browser I use. And yes, it'll look at my face and see the image of me. Only then can you access the, access the device. And you can do that without any type of security network. Uh, with regards to credit freeze, I would freeze all credit cards. Uh, except for the one maybe that you use regularly. You want to freeze your, freeze your credit card accounts, um, and also on your credit bureau. And I would strongly urge you, kupunas, to tell your grandchildren, your, your children and your grandchildren to freeze theirs. Because believe it or not, on the black, dark web, uh, infants' identity is valued at the highest. Because if I steal an eighty-year-old, you know, identity, I have maybe ten, fifteen years to use that identity. If I steal an infant, the moment they have a social security number, I can steal their identity minimum for eighteen years, if not for however long until they find me. Right? Because no one's doing credit checks on infants' tin numbers or to infant social security number. So one big tip I share at the bank is infants, uh, all kids, their, their identities or credit, uh, history should be locked. So you do that by contacting the three bureaus and then you lift it when you don't need it.
Thank you. And then Adam, I, since, since Jolie called you out the question on to finish up Auntie's question. Um, Norton, are there any other ones that you would recommend in terms of software that we should be using?
I think more important than any brand, you know, I'll say, and not to endorse anyone, there's a lot of good tools out there. Um, don't rely solely on them. It's great if you have that. I think, um, that's a simple safety step and that's awesome that you're doing that. But don't rely wholly on that. So following these other safety tips and staying aware is also important. Uh, but there's a lot of good tools. I, I, you know, I, I would say many of them are going to be sufficient. Just having one of those and being security aware, keeping it updated, keeping your devices patched is a huge step forward and, and staying aware of the threats.
Any other questions? All right. Any, I'll just look to see if there's anyone else before I give you a second question back there. All right, go for it. And this will be our last question for the evening.
What kind of criminal penalties would I have against me if I gave a false social security number?
To whom? To a scammer, okay. What kind of penalties would he have if he gave a false social security number to a scammer?
To me, nothing.
Nothing.
Nothing because they're not legitimate themselves. So if you do give fake information, that, that's great.
But you would also risk of, you, you're also risking that someone else would be.
Somebody else may have that.
You know, innocently victimized.
Yeah, right.
So we would recommend just if they ask for something and it falls within those tips, you know, threatening immediate promising your secrecy, don't even respond, just hang up the phone. Or delete the text, delete the email, shut down your computer. Um, engaging gives them more opportunities to try and get more information from you.
That seems like very solid advice. Don't engage. When in doubt, hang up and contact our wonderful friends. Thank you so much for all of this wonderful information. Very, very, very much appreciate your, your wisdom on all of this. I learned so very, very much. Uh, what would drive safely, everybody. Mahalo for joining us. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, October second from five thirty to seven PM. We will be back at the Parker School Theater with Doug Simon's University of Hawaii Institute for Ashrami, talking about, um, the past, present and future of Ashrami in Hawaii. Mahalo.